Wow.
Evening, everyone. Calling this Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, is happening in order at 6:00 P. M. Everyone please rise.
Let the light in the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On Texas side, let the dignity be Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Thank you. I forgot to turn my mic front on. Okay. Just wanted to make sure everybody was commenting. Item one, public comments and announcements. At this time, we would like to listen to any member of the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes for each speaker, shall be limited to city business or city-related business and matters of general public interest, and shall not include any personal attacks or abusive language. All public remarks shall be addressed to the chair, comments should not be directed toward individual council members, city staff, or other members of the public. In accordance to Texas Open Meetings Act, members may now discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. When your name is called, please come to the podium and state your name and address clearly into the microphone for the record before making your comments. Thank you. Okay. I could have maybe eight names here. Joe, is it Joe Eckhart? I'm sorry. Hello, how are you? Come right up here.
My name's Joa.
Oh, sorry, wait. The microphone may not be on. Let's, we're gonna check. Okay.
Hi, I'm Joa. I'm fourteen and I live in forty-five ten North Hare Drive. I was here, talked about, discussed the skate park, and it's like, it's repairs and what it needs. It's just everything around it's wrong. Here, we have a lot of football, baseball, we have a lot of that. We have no alternative, like, like, sports. I skate, I scooter, I do a lot of things, everything I do on wheels, like mechanics, cars and all that. But what I like mostly doing is skating, and that's usually what I do outside of school. And inside school, I usually just kind of sit there, it's boring, and I hate it. When I did get out of school, I loved doing skating, that's all I do. And so, I don't want to travel every day, thirty to forty minutes, to get to another skate park when I could go down the road, but I can't, because I have, there's no reason to go there. The rails are terrible, the coping, which is the metal, the metal that you grind on, it's giant, and some, in some cases, it's too little, you can't even get it. And so, when you get to there, all you see is a skate park, and it's not really nothing special. There's no one ever there. I always go to other skate parks, and I see multiple people there, but there's never people, like, talking about how good Se- Seabrook is. I've always heard, oh, I just did the forest there at Aleve, I'm just a person something, something at Southside. It's just different things, but I've never heard anything about Seabrook. Only thing I've ever heard of Seabrook is, it's terrible, that's the truth. And I don't like hearing that, I feel embarrassed. At one of my school's picnics, there's a guy there, and we just had a conversation, and he said he's never coming back to our skate park. I felt embarrassed there, to know that our skate park is that bad, that they've said it's that terrible. Um, and I think that it's just, it's fair to everyone to have their own opinion, and it's, it's fair for me to be able to go to my skate park and not get hurt, like my friends. I've had multiple friends that has broken wrists, broken arms because of the paint, the paint you slip on. I don't know why we decided on a painting. It's, it, it hurts people. I've slid on it, I've slid on concrete, which is painted. I don't understand how it's even possible, but it happened. It's, but, like, the paint is just like, it's not, it's not a good idea, because it causes pain, it causes, like, hurt, and it's just not good. And, like, having a good skate park can bring in, like, other companies, like skate shops, other people, to just come and hang out. And skaters and everybody else spend a lot of money on their sport. I spend a lot of money on my sport, that's what I like most. And it's not a cheap sport, some like, like BMXing and biking, mountain biking, skaters, scooter riders, rollerblades, quads, literally, there's a really big chunk of, like, sports that skate parks use. I think that's why it's a good idea to either renovate or just get a new skate park in general. I, I think that's my, uh, my opinion on it.
Thank you, young man. Steve Eckhart, must be his brother, I'm guessing.
No, I'm his dad. And I just wanted to add on to that, because I go to the skate park with him as well, and what he was talking about with the paint. When we paint that, it's like ice, it's super dangerous, there's, it's, it's not safe. We've actually had a friend break his arm on it, because the ground gets really slippery. But on top of that, like, there's one thing that he, he was jumping around a little bit, but he did a great job. But one thing I do want to say is, there's other parks that we go to, that other, other groups, there's one called For the Love, I believe it is, and there's another one, there's, there's a group that I'm part of called HT Exploding. We have a lot of skate parks that where we do competitions, we're out bringing a lot of businesses in, that we sponsor, and we do different things like that. But nobody will touch that skate park with a ten-foot pole, because it's so outdated, there's a lot of, there's a lot of maintenance, some of the ramps have actually settled into the concrete where it's not even level. Like, it's, it's a joke, there's guys that'll be like, if you drop in that, you're gonna die, because it's about a two-inch gap from where the ramp to the concrete itself. It, it's in disarray, it's in disrepair, honestly, in my opinion, with the slippery surfaces of the paint, and just some of the ramps just needing, needing to be addressed. I think, just in my opinion, I think it'd be nice to see if we can put this on the group, or on a, on a list, to be able to have a conversation, to really kind of get this moving forward, because I can tell you, like, right now, you go to any other municipality around here that has actual skate parks, they're, they're packed, they really are. And, and that brings in commerce to the local businesses, brings people in. You go to our park, or you go to any other park outside of the one that we have, a lot of times, people will come back and they will, they will kind of laugh at the back skate, the back Seabrook, that's terrible, it really is. It's kind of, and it, I don't, I don't want to talk bad about my, about our things here, but it, it is, it is something that people will not purposely come out of their way to come to. And it would be great to have a system, or have a, have something in place, to where, that you want to bring in competitions, you want to bring certain things into, but nobody really wants to, just because it's just, it's not good. So, that's all I got.
Thank you very much. I know you were looking at Tyler, because he's a young man, and you don't think I can get on those wheels, I get that, that's all right. All right, Dara Nobla, and thank you for the sweets.
You're welcome. I just really wanted to introduce myself as a business owner here in Seabrook. I own Sunshine Kitchen, and some of you I know, and some of you I don't, and as well as the people in the audience here. And just wanted to, I brought some treats for you guys. I just celebrated three years here in Seabrook. I've been a resident for, since two thousand and one, my kids grew up here. And honestly, this last year has been the first time I really felt like I could get out and really start networking and getting to know my community, in more than just being in the bakery all the time. So, that is, more than anything, I wanted to let you know I'm here, let you enjoy some of the treats that we do. I have flyers, I didn't bring enough goodies for everyone here, but I can leave some out, if that's okay, at the, in, out in the foyer or whatever. But just wanted to thank everyone that's come into my business, and would love to meet every one of you on a personal basis. And I'm in Pelican Plaza, if you don't know where I am, I'm next to the barber shop, and I'm where Specs is, everybody seems to kind of know when I say Specs where that is. So, it says bakery. So, we do a whole lot more than just make cakes, but we make beautiful cakes. You can visit our website on my little sticker there, but more than anything, I would invite you in, I'd love to get to know you. I pride myself on getting to know my customers, and that was it. So, thank y'all.
Thank you very much. Kelly Stewart.
Mayor, Council, my name is Kelly Stewart. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the Seabrook Farmers Market, and to raise concerns about how it's being treated on this agenda item. The market has become more than just a place to buy produce, it is a community hub. It brings families out, brings in visitors, and creates the kind of foot traffic and vibrancy that every city claims to want for its public spaces. It contributes directly to our local economy, not just for local growers and vendors, but for the surrounding businesses that see new customers because of it. Yet, instead of celebrating the success, the market is being singled out over porta potties. Porta potties that are regularly serviced, porta potties that fill a very real need when hundreds of people gather at the market on Main Street. If the city wants stricter standards for facilities, then that standard should be applied consistently across all venues, not just to the farmer's market. And if the city insists on having the porta potties removed and returned every single week and the market is here, then the Economic Development Corporation, which is well-funded, and exists to support exactly this type of growth, should cover that cost, not the family putting in the work to bring people here. We often talk about heads and beds in reference to hotel stays that justify hot funding. Farmers markets generate that same kind of EDC impact. Visitors come in from neighboring towns, they stay for the day, they discover Seabrook, they come back for dinner, for our parks, for our waterfront, and for our future events. That is the true measure of tourism. It's frustrating to see this market targeted over something so minor, when the value it brings is so clear. Instead of building barriers, we should be finding ways to expand it, promote it, and make it even stronger. Seabrook thrives when we support our local organizers, not when we create unnecessary hurdles for them. These are people investing their time, their energy, and themselves into making our city better. The least we can do is meet them halfway. So, I ask you to recognize the good that the farmer's market is doing. Recognize that the porta potty issue is not really about porta potties at all. It's about whether we, as a city, want to encourage community-led growth, or whether we want to discourage it. Please make the right choice tonight. For Seabrook, let's stand behind the Seabrook Farmers Market, and let the people who are making it hap, and the people who are making it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Drew Blomstrom, sorry if I messed that up.
All right. How are you?
Good, Drew.
Well?
Yes, sir. Your name and, and where you live, for the record, please.
Uh, I, my name is Drew Blomstrom, and I'm from Alvin, Texas.
Thank you.
I live on a small local farm there, and I also service the Seabrook Farmers Market, with local pastries, meat, eggs, and a herd share for raw dairy. And I have been a part of that market for the last five to six occasions when the market gathers. And I'll just say this, I'm not gonna bore you with a lot of things, I'm just gonna point out some very glaring things, and that is, when you spend money with a corporation, forty-three percent of that goes back to your local economy. When you spend it with a local business, over sixty-seven percent of it goes back to your local economy. Twenty percent's a lot of every dollar. And I understand that you guys speak about things and money, and so that's what I want to encourage you to think about in this, in this situation. Not just about the money, but I'm also gonna share some other things as well. Joel Salatin is a farmer and rancher that is nationally and globally known, and one of his, one of my favorite quotes of his is, "If we want to see a stronger food system, we need to close the radius in which our food travels from, from farm to fork. And we are thirty-five minutes that direction, whichever direction the ocean or the bay is not." I'm not super familiar with Seabrook, I do not live here, so. But with that, our food system as a nation is very weak. We saw that condition about five years ago, and everybody wants to tell the national government, that they, the federal government, that they need to get on board, and they need to make some changes. The thing is, is those changes that need to be made and can be made start with the local economy. And the way that happens is you support local farmers, and I'm not just talking about me. There's probably twenty-five of us, and everybody needs support. But we're the ones that stepped up to the plate to support Seabrook Farmers Market, and we're grateful. It has now become a, an income that we can count on, to support not just Kayla and her hard work, but also the people of Seabrook. They count on us being there to be able to provide that food. And so, I would say this, unless you want to teach the city people of Seabrook how to eat siding or concrete, you should keep a farmer's market, because those local, those local farmers, and those local producers, will go somewhere else. And a great evidence of that is, I also serve in, serve some farmer's markets in the city of Houston, and I've had over a dozen people come to our booth at Seabrook Farmers Market and say, wow, really glad you guys are here. We normally go to Urban Harvest, Memorial Village, Rice Village, Heights, Mercantile, they're traveling over forty minutes, sometimes an hour, to go get local food. And if that doesn't tell you something about your local economy, and what your local economy wants, and how much it has grown just in the last four weeks, I don't know what will. And the last thing is, I will say this, just a reminder, if we want to stabilize our nation's food system, and I know medical's important, and all the other things are important, but everybody's gotta eat, right? So, this is, this is like, one of the most important things that you can not only support, but you can help stabilize and fund in your city. And in fact, in Houston, they spend a, quite a bit of money supporting the farmer's markets, and that's why they're thriving. Not because there's a ton of people in Houston. People travel all over to come to Houston to shop, because the farmer's markets are great. And the team that is doing it here in, in Seabrook, is doing a great job, so I just want to continue to see that happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Kevin Anderson.
Good evening, Kevin Anderson, twenty thirty-three Willow Whisp Drive, Seabrook. I want to speak a little bit about the farmer's market. It's been a great addition to this town. I've talked to people in Houston, League City, Kima, mostly Seabrook, and everybody has loved it. I do farmer's markets with Drew, and Sundays I'm out in Houston. A lot of people go to Houston, live down here, maybe not just Seabrook, but in the surrounding areas. And that's a lot of people that can come to Seabrook and frequent other businesses. I, I think it's a great long-term addition, it's gonna bring a lot of people in the very short time that it's been here. I've seen hundreds of people walk through the market every first and third Saturday. So, I hope you guys do the right thing, keep it going. And I'd also like to touch on the skate park. Growing up BMX riding, I have to agree with them. It's a rough skate park, the paint is dangerous, it does need some upgrades, and skate parks do bring a lot of people to towns. I've seen it back in New Jersey where I come from, and it could bring a lot of revenue to the town. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir, thank you. Joe McCall.
Joe McCall, Seabrook, I've lived here for fifty-eight years. Okay, so first off, I see that we're gonna spend thirty-eight thousand dollars on the repairs to the fire station. So, here's my analogy, you have a house, your house starts to have a roof leak, your AC's going out, you got mold, and you wait twelve, fifteen years to do anything for it. That's absolutely a criminal act right there, that's unbelievable, it's terrible. Thirty-eight thousand, I guess you could be fixing that skate park if you didn't have to spend the thirty-eight thousand to do the repairs on a fire station that you should have been doing maintenance all along. Wow. So, now we're in hurricane season, we've just had the anniversary of a couple hurricanes, and I go out here and I look at the ditch out here, last meeting, two weeks ago, you got twelve, fifteen-inch pipes, they're absolutely packed full of dirt, one hundred percent packed full of dirt, there might be like, a two-inch little gap. Now, how do you let that happen? That's just crazy. So, you let your ditches fill up, and then you're gonna complain, well, it flooded here. Well, the reason it flooded, because you didn't clean the ditch out. So, why aren't you doing the maintenance on that? This kind of stuff is just so simple. And then you wonder why people who don't bring businesses to Seabrook, like Tuckey's and maybe Margaritaville, look around at the weeds that are fifteen feet tall, ditches that are packed full of dirt, and the fire station looks the way it does, and then they go, wow, maybe I could go to a different city that at least takes care of stuff. So, the public restroom, you can build a public restroom along Main Street. FEMA's probably not gonna exist at the end of this year, Trump's already talked about that. They have ridiculous kind of, you know, they're overregulated, it's crazy. So, just, they have a one-way valve, you can build restrooms, it's so the sea water doesn't get into your, and into your water system, into your sewer system, and then wreck those pumps. So, what you do is, you have that one-way valve, all these other cities around here, at sea level, have the same thing, so you solve that problem right there. Okay, the street signs at Miramar Green and Hialeah got fixed, so there are actual street signs there, so that's a good thing. So, I did a little drive around, you go down Toddville Road, and you get to Red Bluff, no street sign. Yes, I understand there was construction there, and yes, I understand it's all torn up, but again, it's been at least months that that construction is, has been completed. So, that's a major intersection, you should have a street sign there. There's forty-five others, by the way, forty-five streets in Seabrook right now, in just half the city driven. I haven't driven the whole city for that, but forty-five signs are missing. So, again, this comes down to the little things. In the world I come from, the little things do matter. There's, there's a guy that, he lost a football game last night, but he ends up with, like, seven Super Bowls, and then another guy, and all they talk about is details, details, details. Maybe that's why they've won six and seven Super Bowls together and stuff like that, wow, interesting. Maybe Seabrook could get on that same page and do the same thing. And if that comes off a little smart alecky or whatever, maybe it does, but it's because it should have been done all along. These are kind of things that are easy fixes, just get it done.
Thank you, sir. Kelly Anette Ospal.
Mayor, Council? I'm Kelly Anette Ospal. I own Ospal's Boutique by Kelly Anette on fourteen oh nine Main Street. I want to say thank you to everyone for coming into my store, supporting me from afar, shipping stuff to your cousin. If I haven't seen you or sold you hunting and fishing license, I need to see you in the morning, so I can sell you hunting and fishing license. But I just, I just want to say thank you for, for the ability to be a shop owner. I lived in Shore Acres for eight years, and it was, I wanted to dream of going in a golf cart and going down to downtown La Porte and owning a business. It didn't work. I am a Christian woman, and I was told I could not mention the Lord in the city offices, but that's who I serve, is my Lord Jesus Christ. And I want to thank y'all for allowing me to be a, a business owner in this community, and be able to pray out front and pray inside. I can't even think about a portable toilet right now. I have a five-year-old client that is hanging on for his life at MD Anderson, when another client of mine is over ICU pediatrics caring for him. I met HUB a couple of weeks ago, two weeks ago, actually, and ran into a client of mine's son, how's your mom? My mom just passed away. And there's four that I'm missing since I relocated into Seabrook downtown. And there's four that I'm missing since I relocated into Seabrook downtown. And all of that stuff doesn't even matter when you stop and think about the scope of life, when you've got a five-year-old child suffering cancer and he's not going to make it. So I'm for the market. I love to see the hustle and bustle. I post about it on my Instagram and Facebook, how it sees the couple, the families coming in and the kids. One kid in particular Saturday brought in his report card because his mom took him out of school the day before he was supposed to be out of school, and he wanted to share his all As. And that's why I'm here. I just, I'm proud to be here. I'm proud to be a citizen. I moved out of Kima to come to Seabrook, and, and I'm honored to be here. And this is totally not what I was going to talk about tonight, but it's what I'm talking about tonight. The citizens, I believe, really need to come together when there's, you stop and think about the things in life that are important so much, doesn't need to be on the table or on the agenda. Thank you all.
Thank you. Did I forget anyone? Anyone not getting an opportunity to sign up? You, you wanted to, you wanted to speak, or you're going to be on the agenda later? Okay, thank you. Sorry, item 1.1, Mayor, City Council, and/or members of the city staff may make announcements about city community events.
All right, upcoming city events. We have Kids Fish, which is a catch-and-release fishing tournament just for kids in grades pre-K through 5th on Saturday, September 13th, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM off on Main Street. For more information on that, you can go to seabrooktexas.gov/kidsfish. And the other event that I have here is the Seabrook Saltwater Derby, which is a fishing tournament on Saturday, September 27th, at 5:30 in the morning at Barge 295 off of Nassau Parkway. For more information on that, you can go to seabrooksaltwaterderby.com. And if you want to keep up to date with everything going on in Seabrook, you can go to seabrooktexas.gov or follow some of the social media platforms that we have.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Item 1.2, City Manager update and report to City Council on various items that require no action, including Seabrook Parks, excuse me, Seabrook Boards and Commissions, transportation projects, and City Seabrook CIP projects.
Mayor and Council, I'll start with our capital improvement project. So we've got our 146 interconnect. This is the water line connection that we've been talking about. We had a street closure on Old 146 here recently. The vault, which was the last component for that project, went in. And now we're just waiting on the City of Pasadena at Port Road to make that connection. And that project will close out. Again, this is a great project and the redundancy of our water system. Seascape Water Lines off Red Bluff, we have finished two additional testings off North Heron and West Flamingo, so it's easing towards the October closeout for that project. And we have our Main Street wastewater treatment demo. We've been talking about that. Our engineer firm, Cobb Finley, is working on the plan set for that. So we did get a copy of the preliminary plans. They're in review with our staff currently, right now. Once we get all the comments back, we'll move towards that next step that we've been talking about, which is a request for proposal. So hopefully we'll have an updated timeline by the next meeting. Pine Gully Lift Station continues. We've got the permit process, 14 days is completed, so we'll be moving forward with that one to the bid process. And that, again, is our exposed line across Toddville Bridge. We haven't talked some time about this, but out back behind the police station, we have applied for a number of grants for our generators around the city. So the generator that is out back for City Hall and for the police station, we've gotten an award on that, and now we have a potential delivery date at the end of October. Again, over tremendous grant offerings a couple of years ago, we went out, over a million dollars' worth of generators that the city will recognize. This is the third one that we'll be getting in. On the fire station generator, this is the other generator. We have probably towards the end of September, this one will be going in as well, so that will close out that project. And then we have the Corether's item. So this was a bid project that was approved by City Council. We've got the silt fencing, the contractor mobilization, and then that contractor should be starting sometime this week. Pelican Bay, tonight you've got an item on your agenda for the Pelican Bay Pool that we'll talk about as far as the building portion of the project. We are already moving forward with the layout of the two pools and the design and the splash pad and all of that. So that's fully in line. We'll talk about the need to do some additional planning on the building side. And then we're still targeting that May projection. It's, it's tight, but we're still hoping to target next summer. And then on transportation, as you can tell, crews have moved back in at Red Bluff and Old One, or Red Bluff and 146. So that's our second 146 project. Excuse me, they're reporting that they'll finish that east lane, that's really a northbound lane, here in the next few months. There'll be a pause, and then they'll switch over to the southbound lane and finish that one out as well. On additional boards and commissions, not a lot of activity since our last report. You do have a Parks and Trails Committee that's coming up. They'll be meeting with Tech Dot. So as you recall, you all got a recommendation on the Keep Texas Beautiful Grant. Tech Dot will pipe into that meeting and assist them on the Tech Dot process, what the next steps are going to be. And then we've got, again, all the Boards, Board of Adjustment, Building Standards, follow-up meetings for the demolition of a number of structures coming up in September and October. Any questions?
Gail, do we have any update on the EMS Annex?
The EMS Annex, we did sign contracts today, and so we've got those all in place, and we'll just be waiting now for actual shovel in the ground, and we should have that probably within the week.
Gail, the light's on. We kind of emailed on that. Is there any other updates on that?
No, it, it looked like Brian reached out to them, so it looks like they were probably fixed at one point. There's something that they were unaware of, so they did mention that they'll be back out, hopefully tonight or tomorrow night to take a look at that.
Okay, great, thanks.
Anything else? Thank you. Pardon me. Item 2, Consent Agenda. Item 2.1, Approve the Minutes of the August 19, 2025 Joint Meeting of City Council and Seabrook Economic Development Corporation and City Council Special Budget Session in the August 19, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Councilmember Hammond makes the motion. Councilmember Tillot seconds. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Item 3, Adjourned Regular Session. Item 3, Adjourned Regular Session Enter Into a Workshop Session at 6:33. Item 3.1, Your Presentation Reported the Certified Appraisal Role from Harris County Appraisal District HCap for the calculation of the 2025 No New Revenue Rate and the Voter Approval Rate. I understand we did not receive the certified appraisal role.
That is correct. Mayor and Council, we do not have certified roles in at this time.
There is no action to be taken on that item. Item 3.2, Review and Discuss Fiscal Year 2025-2026 Proposed Budget, Including Special Funds and Capital Improvement Programs, CIP.
Mayor and Council, I'll go back over a pretty high summary, but please stop me if there's any comments, questions. We'll be going over the budget and the CIP. Mike is available as well, and I appreciate his help throughout this process of formulating the budget. So as the mayor mentioned, we do not have the certified roles, which is, for Seabrook, a very critical amount. We've gone through eminent domain here recently, and all we can speculate is that there's a lot of detailed touching that they're doing to our roles in particular. So to set the tax rate on our estimated, we could lose out on some tax dollars there. So we are electing to recommend to council just await. Moving forward tonight, we would recommend that we move forward per our charter on the budget and the CIP as we had planned. Take a record vote on that and go ahead and set the public hearing date. So as a recap, we've shown this budget calendar a couple of times. You've moved on. We did not, at the August 30th deadline, did not receive the certified roles from Harris County. We are still looking for the budget side of it to hold a public hearing on September 25th. And then the arrows would just be dependent on when we do get the certified roles, and we have 60 days on, from the state's side to begin that process. So it'll be very condensed. We'll come back immediately to City Council, and we'll fill in the gap here at the end as far as the tax. So again, please stop me. I'll run through on a summary. You've got attached to the agenda tonight, the full budget and the full CIP as proposed with some minor changes. We did get the EDC budget in after our last workshop, so that's main change on that one. For your capital, or excuse me, for your full budget, you tonight are going to be looking at moving forward with an entire budget of over $60 million. This includes not only the general fund, your enterprise, but all your special and your capital funds as well. So normally, we do have a budget plus your tax rate to consider. That's not going to happen tonight. We'll wait on the certified roles. We'll move forward with your budget adoption process, and then we'll wait for the tax rate items once it's certified. Per your charter, the 27th of September is the last day that we can approve your budget, so we will be coming in close on that for the 25th of September, for us to meet again, open up the public hearings for the public. And we'll have the budget after this meeting, everything on the homepage and on the city's This will establish a spending plan for our fiscal year '26. And we'll authorize the city operations, including our special funds and CIP projects to continue, all in accordance with our charter deadlines. And we will, again, come back for the tax rate ordinance based on those certified values. For the general fund, your expenditures, just looking at that, this is a snapshot of what we talk about pretty much at almost every workshop, but it is, the assets is your employees. So 71% of those general funds of your $15.6 million budget is attributed to personnel cost. Shortly after that is your services. In revenues, the revenues that funds the city's overall operations, every city is a little bit different. For us, it is just over 44% of property tax, and sales tax is just slightly over 15%. From there, we have transfers in. Bulk of that is, we have the enterprise fund, which is the funding for your water and wastewater. So there is an administration fee that slides over, so that is your third one. And then we have franchise coming in forth. So it's a little difficult to see. Again, you've got attachments, council, with your login. You've got over 200 pages of the budget to review, but I'll hit some of the highlights and then pause and see if there's any questions. So on 71, again, just making note that we're, do not have those final tax rules. We were extremely conservative this year on the revenues. We are seeing everything flatten, which is not unusual when you compare it to other cities. But right now, our assumptions are 0% on the ad valorem. And with our sales tax trends, we're being extremely conservative there. We are seeing that sort of flatten out, so we've taken a bit of a decrease at this particular moment. Prior use funds is a line that we typically have something that's sliding over from our year that will close out for fiscal year '25. Right now, we have zero. However, later on in the presentation, I will talk a little bit more about this one. Transfers in your enterprise fund, again, are for enterprise, for administrative, and then the transfers out, just as a note, we collect a franchise fee on waste management expended, or fees that come in. We take those waste management franchise fees and we slide them into your capital so that we can reduce streets and et cetera. On page 54, this is an additional breakout, if you're curious, on the breakout per department within your general fund. Again, as most cities, public safety is our highest, but that's not unusual to every city in, across the nation. Our enterprise fund, on page 176 of your attachment, this is where we have to estimate annual water usage, and based on the trends, we've reduced that a little bit, but this, again, is usage with the revenues coming in to offset that. So we're just kind of truing that up to what we're seeing in the trend line. City of Pasadena is our sole water provider at this point, and we have issued no additional rate change at this point. We did, the last city council meeting on waste management have additional rate changes moving forward. So I'll pause there. Again, that was kind of high level, but general fund, enterprise fund, any questions, comments, changes?
When it comes to rate changes on water, does that stay fixed at the, the year, or can that possibly change throughout the year?
So per our contract with the City of Pasadena, they, much like waste management, have a CPI adjustment based on capital improvements to their infrastructure. If that's triggered, we will get a rate increase letter. We've typically already gotten that by now, if, if that's been triggered. So, but that, that's open on an annual basis for them to submit a rate letter.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, the second item in your workshop session is your CIP or your capital improvement program. As a recap, some of the funds that are streaming into this, we're still working on your 2023 bond program, 4.3. We have Fire Training Tower that is in progress, so we've made some significant strides on that as far as, as, like finalizing the design between the fire department and the designers. So hopefully we're going to be bringing that back up to the next meeting for you to move to the next step. EMS expansion at the fire station, the 2.4 million, that project is in progress.
Yeah, I'm sorry, does that include some repairs on the fire station as well?
The 2.4 is just solely the plan set that we went out to bid for, so that's the addition to the building.
But part of that, there is some of the additional addendums for other stuff inside the building was also.
Oh, I'm sorry, to your que, yes. So there is a couple alternate adds that we'll touch inside the existing fire station kitchen, yes. Also, part of that bond issuance, we'd had 1.4 for a fire truck, so these are type apparatus that we talked about at the time. It's a huge lead time, so it's in the queue, and we're in, hopefully, maybe less than three years. But it's an extremely long process. Certificates of Obligation, this was an additional debt tool that was taken out to begin street rehabs. So we'll talk about the streets that are queued up for '26, but that was a $10 million funding stream for those capital projects. On your proposed projects, we'll start with wastewater, so they're at the top, and you've got, again, attached your huge document that has all the details for each one of these, but I'll just kind of touch the ones that are planned for '26. So we have the lift station number five, Force Main. We have the Main Street plant demolition. We have lakeside sanitary sewer relocation, and then we have the Pine Gully Lift Station, Force Main Boar. That comes to approximately $1.3 million in wastewater. We have outfall replacement that will help make sure that we have proper drainage on our outfalls around the city, and that is $550,000. As far as streets, we've been talking about East Meyer, so staff has kicked off internally without grant obligations from the county at this point, but to go ahead and go and design, East Meyer's tagged for fiscal year '26. North Meyer, still haven't heard anything back from the county. This is the one that we're partnering, using their engineering and designing firm. And then we have Lyman Street and S34 Rule Streets Preventive Maintenance. This has been touched a little bit since our last meeting. So we've gone back to look at streets that are not what we would call connectors, high-volume streets, and gone down from concrete back to an asphalt for preventive maintenance in different areas. So that's reduced, as you'll see in the detail a little bit. Overall, if we look at the full cost for East Meyer and North Meyer, pretty stout $11 million investment in Seabrook streets. Proposed projects in your park area, we have Wildlife Park Trailhead Improvements. This is one that we've got a number of improvements in the description, including the parking lot. We have a resident that donated $10,000, so we're working on doing some type of covered picnic area. And we've moved our older restroom from Bermerhop over there, so we're making a lot of improvements to that trailhead overall. And the parking lot, even going with that grid system that we'll be pricing out in lieu of concrete, it's, it's quite an investment, but the wildlife in, in general, I think, will be a good project. Corether's Garden East Track, we're in progress on that one. And then Pelican Bay Pool, Enhancing Bayside Park, and we'll discuss the funding that's going into that one. That one you heard from the consultants, we're looking at approximately $2.8 million investment on the Bayside Park once the demolition is done. And then Hester Park Pedestrian Bridge, this was brought over by your Parks Board. And our current CIP has Hester Parking, so we talked about the next project now, which is Robinson Parking. So this will be one item that I would ask council for some direction. I think with how big Robinson Parking for additional. I think with how big Robinson Parking for additional parking has grown, Hester may not be something that we need to proceed with. So I've got that one starred for a little bit of discussion this evening. And then finally, our sidewalks. So our sidewalk plan did take a significant budget cut. We've been investing about $100,000. We're going to take that in-house. We got a killer contract last time that our guys are going to do as much as they can in-house, which they can do quite a bit with the $25,000. So we'll make some strides still on sidewalk replacements. All in all, your fiscal year '26 capital improvement, you're making an investment in infrastructure of over $26 million. Any questions on what we've brought up?
I have a question. I think a couple meetings ago, when we had kind of given staff the direction to kind of work on some, some plans for the current police station and just doing some of those repairs, is that part of this, or is that going to be?
Yes, it will. I've got a slide that's going to talk about how potentially we could fund some improvements on that.
Okay, I'll wait.
So I had a question, Gail. Regarding the pier, that would, that would have fallen into this bracket, right, if that were going to be touched?
Correct. So right now, your CIP right now has pushed that out to a future funding year. It's not in fiscal year '26 right now.
So, and I think I, as we discussed earlier, I'll have to make it as a motion, but I'm highly encouraging. We have the money from Harris County to at least assess and do the demo of the, the piers that need to get taken down, or the piling, excuse me. I was disappointed to see that pushed out to 2030. I think it's something the community wants and needs. And, I mean, we've had so many discussions. I'd like to see that added, at least that, to get us a step in the right direction of getting this done.
Did you say it was pushed out to 2030? I didn't hear that, or just pushed out to the future?
Right. So I think tonight, it would be helpful. We, we still, as far as I know, county is willing to do 50% of demolition.
Right.
But right now, in your fiscal year '26, we'll need some direction if we want to go ahead and move with just the demolition. And I think right now, there's not a clear funding path for the construction side of this, so we did push it out a few years.
Well, would it make sense to, or would it not make sense to do the demolition now? I think if the same company did the demo that does the construction, it seems like would be a little less cost at the end of the day if we didn't separate the two. Do you have a sense of that?
We'll have to bid it either way. So if we do a bid only for demolition, it...
There'll be two different bids?
It'll be two different bids.
Okay.
I think the issue is, we don't know how long that, that money, they've granted us an extension on that. And then the 2030 is on the CIP budget that she passed us. It has the year brackets.
It got pushed out to 2030.
That, that, to me, I mean, maybe it was just an arbitrary, like, push off, but I sure hope we're not waiting till 2030 to touch that.
And when we start talking about that, we can actually, I mean, just kind of elaborate a little bit more, because when we do get to action items, anything that y'all want to change, just let us know. You will need to let us know. I think right now, we were estimating $400,000 based on when we put out to bid in 2022 was the approximate demolition cost. So if council is interested, we would need to look for that match of $200,000, and we could pull that from, hopefully, from Capital Fund 28.
All right, and follow-up question on what Tom had talked about earlier. Had we had this secondary study done to determine what piers could remain if we were to do the full project?
Right. So in one of the discussion items, we, I went out, got a cost estimate for approximately $11,000, and $11,000 would go take the plan set that we have right now, survey the piers, and then determine which piers would be in conflict with the new piers. So some can stay, but it would need to be surveyed, and then the CAD overlay to make sure which ones stay and which ones go.
Okay. I mean, that kind of makes sense, because I think the cost savings of not taking all those piers that would pay for that study.
Dude, I think I asked you this, and I apologize, I forgot already. Does, does that demo, like, would that survey be covered by some of that demo cost, like, within the match?
Um, I'll have to go back and look. So when we applied with the county, there was a scope of work, and I apologize, I'm not sure if we included that or if that would be accepted.
I'll, I'll reach out to my contact, because I'll ask him that secondary question, how long would they hold that money for us? That's going to be important to know.
Okay. I know we had some comments tonight on the next two bullet points, so we have been working since our last workshop, they came up. So we did, with Public Works, we've had a couple of calls on skate park vendors as far as the upgrades. I've got $500,000 there. We talked to, I think we reached out to more than two, but we actually got some face time with two of vendors that do a lot of municipal skate parks. Not really knowing that much about them. We did talk about, first of all, what would $100,000 get us? I think both vendors laughed a little bit at us, not much. So, and to the point that was made in the public comment earlier, both of the vendors did say that we have an extremely dated skate park. One even went to the next stage of saying, "I've never in my life seen a 28-year-old skate park ever." They were actually pretty fascinated that it was still standing. So, all of that saying, I think there is definitely a need to look at this project. $500,000 is a average between just talking, looking at an aerial view of our footprint that we have now, and that would be a very low starting point. So most likely, you're looking at $500,000 to $700,000 for us to do this appropriately, for them to come in, use the foundation's clean slate, put the features in that actually make sense, connected, and, you know, upgrade us from three decades ago.
Okay, so on this, has anyone reached out to any of the support companies to look at? They have community-type programs? Have you looked at that at all, Angela? I know this was one of the things you wanted.
Yeah, so Tony Hawk has a grant, like, a foundation, and they're really, like, skate parks are their big thing. And I believe there's someone in our community that I was engaging with that has, like, worked with one of those before. So if we agree to at least consider and have the city look into this, then we can also look into those grants and see what money...
So you don't know if it's available, it's just...
No, I, I mean, it is available. We would just have to apply for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
How much would it be for? Sorry, Jim.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not certain what the full amount is that they would grant. I just know that they have built skate parks, and they have an active offering of a grant, like, right now.
From a liability perspective, given your comments from the contractor, should we consider closing that state park, that skate park down? We don't want kids to get hurt out there.
Right. I know we've done a couple of surface patches where we, we have noticed those lips are, you know, separating quite a bit. We probably want to check back with our insurance firm, I think, given some of the comments that we've had tonight, to see if we need to take that much of an action. And then if we could, you know, limp along with Public Works doing another patch job, I'm not sure.
Quick question. So with this estimate here, are we talking a completely new start over skate park, or it sounds to me like it's just a matter of the material of the thing that's kind of inhibiting usage in the meantime? So as a short-term temporary measure, if that's possible, could we, with whatever resources we have, make it more usable for the people that we have, so that that momentum builds up, and possibly this could, you know, with the grant that you're talking about, kind of build its own momentum to eventually getting something to that level, to improving it to a modern-day standard?
Right. And the $100,000, when we were talking to a couple of the vendors, it would probably get us to that point if we wanted to keep the concrete, replace the railing. But I think what came through on both of them is, you've got a 30-year layout plan for the elevated structures that are on there that make, for their professional opinion, absolutely no sense. So we could probably do minor things for 100 grand, have them design and put some money into it. The bigger question is, do we want to do that, or do we, would we want to look at doing it, you know, as a complete wipeout and bring it back updated?
For me, it's just trying to make it as usable as possible, as soon as possible. And I don't know anything about skate parks. I don't know much about this whole process, but it sounds like there's a paint issue. Could, is that a...
Like, power washing it off?
I mean, just so it's usable for the people that are using it.
Yeah.
Simple as that, I mean.
Can we pressure wash it off or sandblast it off somehow?
We will. I've taken some notes, so we'll definitely go out there and see what we can do in-house to make sure that we make it, you know, safer as far as the, you know, those type of things. And then if there's some separation on the concrete, we'll look at that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
The other item that we talked about in the previous workshop is where the new restrooms off Brummerhoff went in at Brummerhoff Park. We have a basketball court that's used quite a bit on that side of town. That was never, we did some, I think, painting 20-plus years ago when that park went in, and we've done a really nice resurfacing over, off of Baybrook Park. So idea was to go and also scope, get a quote on this, and it's approximately $24,000. So that's a full court over there. And tonight, I wanted to discuss adding that and delineating some funding. We could put this in fiscal year '26, so that this project could be immediate on the parks budget. But that was not in your proposed budget tonight, so if we wanted to move forward, we'd need to add that and discuss where we want to get the funding from. Any comments on that one?
I'm in favor of adding it.
That would, you, I think you said there was like a special park fund, right, that that would, we have like $23,000 or $20,000 in it?
We have, so we have $36,000, I think, estimated showing in your document tonight. However, when we looked at that, $10,000 is the donation that that individual put into that fund, so we have about $26,000. We can pull this one out. I'm going to lean on Brian. Brian, we talked about two projects coming out of Park Impact Fees. Remind me, I'm drawing a complete blank. Was it the fence? Did we take the fence out of there? No. That came out of your normal budget? Want to make sure we didn't budget anything additional out of Park Impact, because we... Water faucet, that's right. Okay, thanks, Mike.
You're going to pull out?
Okay. So there was a project. So we are in the process of replacing water fountains with the dog water fountains and things that are doing better in the heat. So they're approximately $6,000, those water fountains. So we did go ahead and do a PO coming out of that. So to answer your question, Park Impact Fees were below now the threshold for this, so we are going to have to look for additional funding.
Do you know, like, with that being said, do you know where we're sitting approximately?
From the Park Impact side? So the, if we've got 36, and it's really more like 26, we just took 10 or six out, approximately 20. That's correct. A little lower, okay. You're coming up with 18? Okay, so 18, not 20. And though, that fund, we've, we've done pretty good about replacing all of the playground sets, so we've been, like, stockpiling once new single-family development was going in. Those fees are paid into the impact fee. So, you know, now we've got some more flexibility. We took a look, I think there was also a comment from, not sure, it was the public or council, at Brummerhoff Park on the playground set. That playground set, minus the mulch around the bottom, really seems to be in some good condition. It just needs to be power washed, so we were going to clean that up. But as far as the structure, it's sound, and it's still pretty similar to what we've bought over at Friendship Park and Pine Gully, so that one isn't something we need to save in that. And we've got a couple of subdivisions that are coming in, so there will be some additional revenues coming in to that fund in the future, in the next couple of years.
Would this weren't being done by city staff, or would we contract it out to a company to do the basketball resurfacing?
I did have staff go ahead and pull the contractor that we were using, or one of the contractors that's similar to what we used over off of Toddville. That's kind of a specialty, so it would be at this cost. It would be a third party doing it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So I'll go ahead and move on. Again, once we get to action items, if you guys will take notes, if these are some things that you would like to add, we can discuss how you want to amend that for the final motion on the budget and CIP. The other thing I just wanted to mention, we've been talking individually on the CIP, and I want to make sure everybody's on the same page on this one. So your Economic Development Corporation can fund a number of CIP projects. Their budget that is part of your packet, the detail on that, they ended up approving $500,000 that goes towards your Liverpool Center, or i.e. Old Seabrook, and it targeted the Bayside Park. So $500,000, we'll talk about the port, or port fund here in a minute, has been earmarked, and we've identified it, all going into the Bayside Park project. The second one that we've had on their CIP for some time was another $500,000 for gateway wayfinding park signs. They've elected, because, again, this is also hot eligible, to reduce that in half, so they've committed 2.965. So right now, on your EDC funding capabilities for this year, they've got $796,000 and 500, 500 available. So the other, just so that everyone's clear, we did set up the new Port of Houston Fund, so we had quite a bit of funds coming from the settlement and the IDA here recently. We did get that deposit and have recognized that in the new fund. 2.9 went in. We've taken the committed $500,000 from EDC, anticipated interest payment for an overall 3.1 in total funds. And then all of your CIP projects right now that we have run through, we've got those earmarked in G with approximately $477,000 in the port fund that we do not have any allocation to for this year.
Are any of these port funds, are there any stipulations, rules tied to it of what it can be and cannot be used for?
The only thing that came with the string was 1.5 million of the 2.9 was identified for park funds. We, originally, it was earmarked for Bayside specifically. They did ultimately say Bayside or other park systems. So right now, in our project listing, we have put it out, Bayside Park.
I know, not this time, but the last time we met, we had discussed maybe asking, like, the port or, you know, one of these big-money industries to, like, be a partner in Bayside to offset those funds. Like, has there been any discussion? I meant to ask you that earlier.
Not yet with the industry, but I do have a meeting with our consultant team that worked on the design. They do have a grant partner in their firm, and they're coming out, because they've identified some possible grants for us to apply for this type of project. So we will, we will be looking at that.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, no other questions? Your special funds, I'm not going to go in a lot of detail. I know you can't probably see that, maybe in your close monitors you can. Overall, this is 6.7. We went over in the last budget workshop a little more detail of what each one of these funds is available to do as far as projects. Most of them, if there's an eligibility of income that's coming in, we've expensed it out, so that the directors that are responsible have the ability to go ahead and use those as appropriate, so. Again, this is just another snapshot in your packet. And then, we'll go ahead and move over to a question that was raised. So this was a slide that we showed at the first workshop, and our directors, when their budget is over and they have an expense that's enormous based on, you know, their budgets, we will ask them to put it into a decision package. I've taken off the full-time employees, given what we're seeing as far as our revenue streams, so that's, that's off the table. However, these one-time expenses, I am bringing back to city council tonight for consideration before we close out and move forward with the budget. Our one-time expenses are $162,300 that I'm asking for consideration, and this consideration would be for surplus that we are going to be anticipating coming out of fiscal year '25. So as you know, we've had quite a few vacancies in our police department and a number of our others, so that's what is predominantly driving our higher-than-expected surpluses. We are sitting on more than the anticipated 25% in our reserves, so I feel like we're certainly healthy and don't need to move that much back into our reserves, given that we've got some pretty good projects that we could get knocked out, and they don't have reoccurring expenses. So I'll just kind of go through the top. If you have any questions, associated directors are here. associated directors are here, so they can answer any questions that you may have. We've talked about, on the first bullet point, digitizing records. And we're looking at a vendor that's actually through Harris County. So we've, I think, found a really good opportunity to bring costs down. And Rachel's been working on that project. So right now, the first phase of this project would be just focusing on the remainder of City Hall records for an allocation of $21,700. We have two mowers that would be for our streets department, an amount of $38,000. We have a large piece of equipment. This is not on our fleet replacement plan, and this is a piece of equipment that's over 20 years old for an excavator, and that is $100,000. And then lastly, our public affairs has a software for workflow for about $2,600. So all in all, that's your 162.3. And I'll just pause there for a second to take comments or questions.
Is the mower, are we replacing two mowers or adding two more to the inventory?
It's going to be replacing two mowers, but the mowers that we have are hand-me-downs for the, from the Parks Department.
Right.
So there'll be two mowers going to auction, but the streets departments will now have their own mowers for the fleet fund, fleet thing.
You said they'll have their own motors for the what fund? Did you say fleet? Okay. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. The second half is what I've been leading up to. So we are through next to the last month of our forecast, and we do feel confident that we are going to probably be much more over 762, very, very healthy surplus. So 762, I believe, is a comfortable resting point. And the facility renovations that we have been talking about since the police station didn't move forward, we've gone over in length. We've got some pretty significant issues, particularly in the police department. We just have some general maintenance upstairs and around the lobby area that we would like to take care of. I do not have confirmed cost. This would be asking council to earmark the 600. We would bring some type of design expert to help us make sure that we project out a project that makes sense before we moved forward, and that would come back to council. So this would just be an ask tonight that if all of these one-time expenses plus potential ceiling of $600,000 for building renovations of $600,000 is agreeable, we would move that over to prior use of funds in the budget that we have tonight. So right now, you have zero. This would be taking 762 300, placing it on prior use funds.
So I'm going backwards a little bit on the City Hall records. You said this is, this is like the first step in it. So what are we looking at?
I'll let Rachel kind of...
Yes. So this is just handling all the records here at City Hall. The majority of records that need to be done are actually over our Public Works Building. We have to keep a lot of that stuff pretty much forever. And it's big maps. It's big things that have never been digitized. So they're taking up a lot of room and risk of being taken out. Also, a lot of records can't be located because they haven't ever been digitized, can't be word searched, can't be found. So that's kind of where we are. It's a, it's a big project, but this City Hall side is just the first phase of that.
So 21,000, I think the original ask last year was 108,000. So we're just breaking this up, and ultimately, that would be the cost impact thereabouts?
Actually, not. We found a new vendor out of Harris County. They handle, they've been handling records for 30 years, and they are much, much cheaper. So we're probably, we're going to be looking at them a little closer and probably get to get maybe even more, a lot more records done for that. It may actually take care of some of that public works side, but I've just started working with them. So, yeah, but we want to kind of take bites out of it rather than all at once kind of deal. So, yes, we have found a much cheaper vendor to work with.
Do we have kind of a breakdown? I know you said you didn't have exact quotes on the police station renovation. Do we have kind of like a general idea of like what, like, high-target areas that they're going to focus on primarily?
Well, I think with the police department, a lot of the identified areas, just in the normal presentation that we did for the bond issuance, we've got, I think, the really outdated and poor-designed kitchen area. We've got a patrol room that needed some upgrades. Their floor is in pathetic condition. We're taking care of a few of the safety issues right now with some different amendments within their budget. However, just the aesthetics, really, that when you walked through and did the tours, that really more quality-of-life upgrades for them.
So they're not fixing the jail cell door, and they're not fixing the way you can hear somebody being interviewed in the break room. I have questions on that.
Yeah.
Because to me, that's kind of important.
Chief's got an update. So he's been working on some, knocking some of this stuff out.
Yes. Good evening, Council, Mayor. This eve, or, we've had some budget savings on the police side because of salaries, all the open positions we had last year. So I've used some of that to get some bids on the jail doors. We're going to get those replaced so that they all swing the correct way, they all function properly, and they're built to a jail, like a Texas Department of Corrections jail standard, so that they'll last probably another, well, as long as we have this building. They'll outlast the building probably. But just fixing some things like that that'll prevent us from running into an issue with our security, with inmate safety, things like that. What was your other question?
The break room and where you can, when you're interviewing someone?
The interview room, we haven't tackled that yet. That's, that would be rolled into this. It's really, I've seen it done before, and it's really more about thickening the walls, increasing the insulation, and then putting some sound deadening material in the, in the false ceiling.
Okay. And then for, I'm trying, this has been a while. I've slept since then. But when we went through and we looked at the evidence room, and we looked at the towers that were being used in that area, have any of those been, are any of those fixing that part of this?
We're doing a lot of the work in-house to renovate the property room. And we're also using the legal means available to us to dispose of some evidence that is not critical, it's very outdated, and needs to be destroyed. So we're, we're working through that process now.
I'm just trying to figure out if this is enough, actually. Not that it's too much. That's what I'm trying to...
Candidly, we, we don't know.
Okay. That's fair. Thanks.
Yes.
Do you need a motion to move forward with this, or?
A little bit later on in the budget, if you guys are just taking notes, I think there's two or three things that whoever formulates that motion, if you'll put those in the motion, that will make those changes.
This isn't equipment. This is just renovations to the building.
Correct. Right. This would be just renovations to the first floor and... Okay. Moving on, this, again, we just have estimated rolls. So I've got red plastered all over this, but this was based on estimated rolls. So I don't know, Mike, if you want to just kind of speak a little bit to this. This is, again, our best estimate right now, but wanted to give you what Mike has loaded as the latest and greatest based on the values that we've got.
Good evening. Yep. This is the calculation I came up with on the no-new revenue tax rate based on the July certified estimates that we discussed in a previous meeting. Where we stand right now, until we get the certified rolls, this is the best calculated estimate on what we would need to fund both our debt obligation as well as the property tax portion of maintenance and operation in your general fund. As you can see, it's, the estimate is below the voter approval rate, but it is over the no-new revenue tax rate. The big driver there, under this estimated tax rate, it would be adopting the no-new revenue maintenance and operation tax rate at 33 cents. However, the debt rate would be going from 10 cents to 12, 12 cents there. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Is the tax roll issues, like, unique for Seabrook, or is Harris County across the board having this?
It's, it's, well, I mean, it's Harris County is who does our appraisal. It's unique in the sense that this is the latest, since I've been here 17 years, that we've waited for it. However, when I've talked to the county, they're, you know, they basically say you can adopt off the certified estimate, which is, you know, an option, or you have 60 days after the point you receive the tax roll to adopt a tax rate. So their concern is not as elevated as Gail or myself as far as adopting the budget, and then how are we going to fund it with our property tax rate? Well, and that's the, if it's wrong, that's part of the reason we always hold off on not adopting from the certified estimate. There's been several, several cities that have done that, and, and the mistake has been, you know, career-ending for the city manager as well as the finance person. So I'm trying to alleviate those. So...
Just, just to be clear, the, the no-new revenue is maintenance and operations. The, the non-voter approval increase is due to the bond that we passed, correct?
That is correct. So the, so when you run the, the no-new revenue calculation, it gives you the no-new revenue for your M&amp;O, and then it, then you basically are looking at, is that going over three and a half, am I going over 3.5% on my M&amp;O, which could potentially trigger the, you're going over the voter, voter approval rate. Because basically, what you're doing is you're calculating the maintenance and operation tax rate, and then whatever you need to fund your debt portion, that's your debt rate. And so you add the no-new revenue from M&amp;O to your debt rate, and that should be the overall no-new revenue unless you issue new debt. So, did I lose anybody?
No.
All right. Anything?
All right. So Mayor and Council, a few more slides. In closing, again, to summarize what Mike said, we've got HCAD on the hook when we do get that. The no-new revenue rate, certified, will be calculated. The VAR will be certified. We'll come back to you. And we'll go through the same process, setting a public hearing, and move forward with the tax portion of this. At the conclusion of this meeting tomorrow, with the changes, we will post the budget, and it'll be available on the homepage as well as on our financial page. And we're encouraging the public to review it. And then, again, we will publish that in the paper as well as the website. And then September 25th, we'll have another public hearing for any comments, changes at that point. And then the adoption will ensure that we will continue with our process.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you very much. We will adjourn the workshop session at 7:20 and enter into regular session. Item five, boards of commissions. Item 5.1, consider and take all appropriate action on the appointment to fill the vacancy on the Economic Development Corporation for a term to expire on January 1, 2026. This is to fill an unexpired term.
We did our interviews and concluded that we would like to recommend Michelle Scholler-Brown.
You're making a motion?
I'm making a motion to recommend Michelle Scholler-Brown. Sorry, I'm still thinking about numbers. I apologize.
Second.
All right. The motion is to recommend Michelle Scholler-Brown to fill the vacancy for the Economic Development Corporation. And I have a second by Councilmember Hammond. Is there any discussion? All in favor? opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. Welcome. September 11, I think, is our, is our meeting. Yes, first meeting for Michelle. Item six, new business. 6.1, consider and take all appropriate action to acknowledge receipt of the sub-certified appraisal role for the Harris County Appraisal District, HCAD. No, no action on this item. Item 6.2, consider and take all appropriate action on the approval to accept the 2025 no-new revenue rate and voter approval rates into official record as calculated in accordance with Texas, Texas Tax Code. I believe also no new action on this item. And 6.3, consider approval for proposed 2025 property tax rate and call public hearing on September 25, 2025. We're going to take a record vote on this, so I need a voice vote from everyone in the affirmative or not. Is that right, Cal?
Well, you'll need a motion. So this is the chance that if anybody's got an amendment to the budget that we just went over and the CIP that we just went over, you would make a motion to accept with the amendments and then start listing those.
So this is where the fun is, right? So is everybody taking notes? And you have, anybody have an amendment?
I'd like to make a motion to add $600,000.
Not in addition to, right? But actually take that into consideration, add it to the budget.
Correct.
That they just presented. I'll second that. He doesn't hear me. Let's run the meeting without him.
Yeah, 6.3. No, is 6.3 no action also? Did I miss that?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's on your tax rate, yes.
I misread. So 6.4, consider approval on the proposed fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget and call public hearing on September 25, 2025. Okay, now we'll entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion, again, that we add $600,000 to the current budget, budget for a facility renovation for a police department and City Hall.
I'll second that. So I have a, we have a motion to add the $600,000 to the police department to, to the budget, and a, Councilmember Sessom, and a second. So now we have...
Fair, if I would, if, is, there's any other items that are entertaining, if we can put that in one vote?
We put it all in one vote.
That might be easier.
You don't want to build it up and then take it back down again?
See, your city secretary is sitting there, so...
She's saying no.
So just as a recap, we've got your, for consideration, that we talked about your one-time expenses, your facility renovations. And then we also talked about the CIP for, I believe, the skate park.
Skate park. And then we also had the, doing the Robinson parking in lieu of Hester parking.
Yeah. Yes.
And I think that's, that's what I had. So the, so, so the full recommendation for the renovations, both parts, both parts, section one and two, what about the skate park upgrades? Anybody have any?
And this one can come back to council. We can formulate that in a future CIP amendment. So with that cost, there's really no funding identified. So we'll come back if councils agree, but we'll present that.
We want to add it to the CIP?
At a later date, yeah. So we're just looking at the basketball resurfacing tonight.
Okay. So we have, we think $18,000 for that. We need to find another $6,000. Is that, is that right?
If council's in agreeance, the $24,000, we could also pull that out of prior-year funds.
Okay. Yeah, I'm agreed, everybody. And then the Robinson park, the Robinson park parking in lieu of Hester parking, we're, we're going to pull Hester parking out of the CIP and add Robinson parking in. Yes? No?
I don't want to vote for that, no. And I'll tell you why. Is this where I tell you why now?
You certainly can.
I think that Old Seabrook needs parking more than Robinson. I think we have a major parking issue in Old Seabrook that we need to address.
You not already have parking out here? We're just resurfacing, we're talking about, right?
No.
Are we adding parking?
If I'm right...
Yeah.
If I'm right.
Yeah.
As, as an East Sider, I can tell you, the park, the parking, Robinson, I wash it over the years.
It's a problem.
It is jammed.
Yeah.
And it, it really needs to be expanded.
All right.
Yeah, I think the idea on that discussion was Robinson Park, we found so much land on Robinson Park that will hopefully be the first phase. And the Hester Park really was not a recommendation from the Parks Board, and you will have to take out quite a few trees and shrubberies to make that one work. So if Robinson is a workable solution, it's probably more of a better natural, yeah.
Okay. You convinced me.
She's still typing. You good?
I think so.
Okay.
Y'all want to make a motion? Presented?
Yes. So the motion would be to, for the, to approve the renovations, one-time expenses, the basketball resurfacing out of prior year funds, and remove Hester parking from the CIP and add Robinson parking.
The pier.
And add the pier into, into the CIP, back into the current CIP.
Right. At least evaluate.
What if we?
Overlay in the demo.
What if we put the pier as a ballot issue for bonds in our next election, which is May, and let the people decide? Because the money's coming from the people either way. And this way, and we could change it, but put it on the ballot for May, and then the folks can decide if they want to, because it's going to affect their tax rate one way or another. And my biggest concern on this budget, and Mr. McCall brought it up about FEMA, we just don't know what FEMA is going to be doing a year from now, and what our liability would be if we have another IC.
But the idea is to try to avoid taking out more debt. So if we can find the funds without putting taxpayers in more debt, because that's what a bond is, is a credit card to the taxpayers.
If we, if we add it to the CIP in a more current year, that's, we're not, we're not saying that we're taking money out of the budget to do it. This is just something we're moving up, up the ladder, is that?
My recommendation is, I believe in Fund 28 Year Capital Fund, we can find the matching $200,000 for just the demo. So the, if I'm clear, it would be in '26 to budget approximately $400,000 and go ahead and take care of the demolition portion of it? Is that?
Yes, yes. That's the full direction. And then assess where we can find the money for the rebuild and cross our fingers that we can get some grant matching in the process.
How far advanced do we need to have like a bond? Like, like, how much time do we have? Should you work on finding additional funds without going to get new debt before we have to, like, by this date? We need to kind of have a, a hard answer by this date to, to be able to get, get the ball rolling for a potential bond.
Rachel, help me out. But I think January, February is when pretty much everything on the, but our Bond Council, do you remember?
I'd need to find out for sure.
Okay.
I'm, yeah, it would definitely be January.
Yeah, so I was thinking, first of the year.
So there's time, because my, my thought, just, we spoke about finding a partnership for Bayside. We're pumping $2.3 million from the Port Fund into Bayside. And so if we can find partnership, someone that like wants to go in on it with us, get their name on a placard or whatever, then that money can go back towards the pier, hence less credit card debt to the taxpayers.
Okay, so I'll reread with that. The motion would be to, to affect renovations and the additional one-time expenses that were on the list, and the basketball resurfacing all out of prior year funds, remove Hester parking from the CIP and add Robinson parking, and then add the demolition of Pine Gully Pier back in the CIP. Second.
Somebody's got a motion.
Somebody's got a, I can't make a motion, somebody's got, but that, I, Councilmember Sessom made the motion.
Then Tyler seconded it the second time.
What, what I just read? Yes.
Yeah, so that was, it was the, the $600,000 for.
You don't need to restate it. Just as stated by the mayor. I move as stated by the. That's your motion?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember, if you may, a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. All right. Well, that was fun. Yeah. Is it tomorrow? All right. Sorry, I lost my place. All right. Item 6.5, consider and take all appropriate action on a one-year contract extension agreement between the city of Seabrook and Hydra Dry Inc. for post-disaster restoration and recovery services and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
Move to approve 6.5.
Councilmember Hammond makes the motion to approve. Councilmember Tolet, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. Item 6.6, consider and take all appropriate action on an updated proposal between the city of Seabrook and Landmark Aquatic for the Pelican Bay renovation and aquatic design in an additional design amount of $24,480. This item is part of the 2025 bond program.
Move to approve 6.6.
Councilmember Hammond makes the motion. Councilmember Tolet, second. Any discussion? No? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. Okay, where are we? Item 6.7, consider and take all.
Go ahead, I'll.
Consider and take all appropriate action on a proposal to approve use of hotel occupancy tax funds for promoting and hosting a Seabrook Fleet Week event on November 11, 2025 and related expenses. This is a fiscal year 2026 budget consideration. Gail, did you have, I think there was a presentation in the packet I saw on this.
There's not a formal presentation. We've been talking about this. So we've had several of the mayor and council members kind of joining in, staff of trying to push this forward. So we did get in touch with the formal consultant with the city of Houston Fleet Week. We've been calendared in based on their recommendation to November 11th. So it is that Tuesday in the middle of the week, but that is, as far as their scheduling, the most appropriate. And what we're bringing forward right now is these items, as far as the drone show, the festival, we'd put some heads in beds. How many? We don't know. But I am asking if we proceed to allow earmarking of some funds from our hotel occupancy tax. We will go ahead and proceed as we've done in the past and try to get some sponsorships as well. However, this is a pretty big event, and so our staff needs to really kick it into gear if we're going to pull this off in November. The idea that's kind of coming together right now is that the star of the show will be a drone show. We'd be closing off Main Street from Toddville approximately just short of the four-way stop sign. We would set it up typically of what we've been adjusted to with the festival. So we would go look for vendors. We would have a VIP area. We would do food trucks, possibly a kids craft area, very similar to what we've done with the other festival. In the middle of the day, right after kickoff, the idea would be to honor our veterans as we've done with just the city event. So we'd have a, at least a 45-minute honor moment in the middle of the festival. So that would be combining it. And then as the sunset falls, everyone could move to the lower part of Main Street, and the drone show could take off towards just past the end of the sewer plant and then go up over the slough area. So we've put together in addition, again, these are not final pricing at all. We are simply taking our experience based on the size of the festival that we've done and looked at it in a couple different approaches. Option A is very similar to what we've gotten accustomed to, which is using a third party to set up all the logistics. We were notified that the Navy's already sending out people to look at the site as far as security. So security would still be important as far as having a controlled entrance, making sure that of all the street areas, we make sure that we get those tight as far as no vehicles being able to drive through. And so the third party has been pretty helpful to help our small staff get all of that managed and set up. So that would be more of what we call the premium and still looking at doing a VIP tent and to roughly around $96,000 is what we're estimating. Again, this is subject to change, but we're asking for some kind of a ceiling amount to get started on the planning process and we'll refine it. Option B, we would try to take as much as we can in-house. And so right now, we've got one full-time person for tourism, and we'd have to carve out some time, our public affairs, and then our city events person to work hand-in-hand to try to come up with their own vendors, to find those pop-up tents if the vendors want to bring in their own, so it wouldn't be the traditional white tents that we've got at the other festival. No dedicated VIP area. That, that can be a bit pricey. There's no fee that's attached to this, so it's an entrance fee. So again, all these costs would be on the city. Limit the fencing, just down to security. We wouldn't have anything that's very elaborate at the entrance of the festival. More grassroots, community-focused. We would retain the drone show and limit any and all costs that we could. So that would be more at the 60,000 mark as well. So again, these, these are not set in stone. It's just to help staff get a green light that you're okay more with the funding of this moving forward. And then we'll bring back through this process as it gets well-defined, updates to city council so that you're comfortable all along the way.
Would 100% of the initial funding come from the hot funds?
Right. So it's, since the event will be in your new fiscal year, it would be us, most likely, the biggest expense that happens right out of the chute is if we do a third party, that contract has to be initiated. That portion of it usually runs about $10,000. So we have to put a hefty deposit of the $10,000 logistics down. And then obviously, I think, I want to say it's 50%. It's a pretty good chunk on deposit for the drone shows. So yeah, there's some expenses that will roll over. They'll be identified out of the fiscal year '26, but we need to go ahead and start occurring those now.
Was this the, and I missed it in the presentation, this, was this the drone company that was in, that was on America's Got Talent, the runner-up from last year?
That, I don't know. I know Lexi has been working.
Yeah, this is them.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, if we're going to do this, this is an official Navy event. The Navy Security's already been here. We're going to do it right. We're not going to mess around with this.
Sure. Is there, are there any sponsor opportunities?
So we are going to, the ones that we typically, we have our own vendors that the city works with. So we're going to present it to them that this is our big event for the year. And just like we did with the festival, we're going to ask all of them to be sponsors and then look for some additional sponsors. So we're hopeful.
We do have this, oh, we have the standing $10,000 from EDC still that they had pledged to our former event, correct?
Correct, yes. And, yes, in your agenda briefing, $10,000 was not moved from the EDC budget. So we would formulate their September agenda to go back over and ask if that's agreeable from EDC as well.
I think if, you know, if we had more time to do this, like maybe, you know, you know, would allow cities to have to do it. But I think we want, like, like the mayor said, we, you know, we're honoring the veterans. We want to do this right the first time. You know, so to me, it almost seems like more beneficial to, you know, hire, you know, contract with the third party, kind of, that's what they do. You know, let them do their thing and, you know, then, and then hopefully maybe it's something that we can turn into like, you know, a repetitive type event for, for the city.
Yeah, I would support option A. You know, let's see how, how they do with it. Might use it again in the future. But I think the most important thing about it is, is anything that's better than fireworks. The participation that we would get from pet owners that would be able to attend would be, I think would be great for the community. So I'm, I'm really supportive of option A.
I would encourage any council members or anyone in the audience that has ideas for sponsors to reach out to the city. This is an important event for us. Good?
Okay. I'm looking for also a motion on this one. So if you guys are in agreeance, if some.
Make a motion of not to exceed amounts from that fund that will get us moving.
I'll make a motion not to exceed $100,000 for the Fleet Week, November 11th event.
Second.
Councilmember Sessom made the motion to, for not to exceed $100,000. Councilmember Hammond, seconds. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. I need to back up for a minute. I, when we approved 6.4, we also approved calling a public hearing on September 25th, 2025. However, I was supposed to take a record vote to do that. So Councilmember, if you would start, let's make, do a voice vote, please, to approve.
I approve.
Councilmember Stanford?
Approve.
Councilmember Hammond?
Approve.
Councilmember Tolet?
Approve.
Councilmember Sivantes?
Approve.
Councilmember Sessom?
Approve.
Mayor approves. Motion carries. Thank you. Is that good? Thank you. All right. Always listen to the attorney. Item 6.6, we did that. Item 6.8, consider and take all appropriate action on the license agreement between the city of Seabrook and Texas Markets. And I would like to invite Texas Markets up to the side podium. I'm sure that there'll be some questions. Gail's their presentation. This is the, we have, we're coming up for license agreement because there was a six-month term, as I recall, and then we have another.
There's a six-month term. I've attached their license agreement. And staff, I'm just bringing this back up. Obviously, we've talked about the restrooms issue. And just looking for direction from city council. We've had quite a few interactions with Texas Markets by phone and by email. And so to not belaborate, I've asked that council to just take a look at this. The holiday season's coming up, and I want to make sure whatever the direction of council is, staff is clear so that we don't have to continue berating them back and forth. And I just need some direction as far as what you're looking for as far as the restrooms.
First, before we start, you did read the license agreement before you signed it, did you not?
Absolutely.
Okay. Is, is there any reason why you're not abiding by the license agreement?
Okay, Miguel Vosconcello, city of Pearland. We run Texas Markets.
Kayla Hensley.
Could you speak into, I'm, I'm having a hard time hearing you up here.
Kayla Hensley, Pearland.
Okay, so I'd like to touch on the comments here and address the agenda. I think, I believe these things shouldn't even be here. They've already been.
I'm very sorry, but I'm, I really.
So I believe these things shouldn't even be up there. They've already been addressed. Like city manager said, we've already spoke back and forth. So like I said, most of these things have already been addressed.
But I'm sorry, are the restrooms still there?
They are right now, yeah.
Have they been there the entire time?
But I'm going to get there. If you give me a second, I'm going to get there.
Have they been there the entire time?
They have, yes, sir.
Does your contract say that you have to remove them?
No, sir.
Your contract says you have to vacate the property by Saturday.
It doesn't say anything about taking the restrooms.
It says vacate the property.
Nothing about the restroom, sir.
Okay. So I see where our communication issue is.
Yes. So I'd like, if you let me get to it, I'd.
You're here to answer questions. Does any council have any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
One question, how many Seabrook businesses do you have participating in the farmer's market?
Actively participating? I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. That's.
Okay. What's the?
We have one here.
Yeah, I, I saw Kevin was here. What's the, what's the process for approving vendors?
They, they apply through email. And then if the, if the spot's open, then we give it to them.
First come, first served.
Okay. Do y'all do any, like, is there, is there any way that we can get to where we can get more Seabrook companies to, to participate?
I would, I would say that probably helping us market so that more people are coming out, so that there's a higher demand for everything.
I know like Gail's Feed Store, who is like the longest business in Seabrook, asked to participate and was told no.
And then we went back to Gail's Feed Store and spoke to him and offered him a free spot for his produce. We can't repeat all these items because there's not high enough demand for everything. If we don't have our, if our vendors are not doing well, they won't want to come back.
Understood.
So.
Yeah, I just, I would, you know, I, I've been out to your market. I love your market. It's, it's a great idea. You know, it's, it's great, it's great for the city. It's great for everyone. I would just like to see, and maybe if there was a way that we could, you know, maybe give like Seabrook businesses kind of like a priority and allow them to kind of, to be able to, to participate. So I don't, because like, like Gail's Feed Store, you know, prime example, when, when they asked to participate and never told no, they, they had to go to La Porte Farmer's Market.
Absolutely.
And, and take, take place there.
So in regards to that, we, we actually, before we even started the first market, we posted on multiple pages that we wanted to have local vendors. Not very many vendors, unfortunately, from their local replied. But the ones we did, I mean, we got our boards, like our cornhole boards painted by a local painter. We got Kevin here. We, we got plenty of local vendors. The issue is, is like I said, it's first come, first served. But we did try to give locals first. But we did try to give locals first the opportunity before the market even started. Like I said, unfortunately, not many people, you know, not many vendors may be heard before we started. And now that we've gotten go, going, it's hard to just kick a vendor out to say, hey, I got another vendor. Sorry, you got to leave. You know, it's, it's, it doesn't make sense to do that.
There actually have been two different citizens who have tried to be in the farmer's market. And I think that one of the things we should be emphasizing is farmer's market. It's great to have vendors come who have produce, organic otherwise. I wouldn't care how many it was, as long as it was a lot of them.
Absolutely.
And really, to me, I love the farmer's market. We want to support the farmer's market.
Thank you.
But things do have to be, you know, you sign an agreement, we need to stay with that agreement.
I agree.
Need to move forward. But do you have a certain amount of booths that you, are we filling them up? Is that the reason why these people didn't get a chance to get in?
No, it's just, we don't have a big enough crowd yet.
A big enough what?
We don't have a big enough crowd coming out yet. Seabrook is already a small community and we're, we're trying, you know, to get everybody out. We're still new and we're growing very rapidly. So I, it's not that we're shutting it down forever. It's just, we can't have four jam people, six sourdough people, you know?
Well, that may be true, except they're going down to another city and participating with another city.
That city also helps market. So that city has people coming from all over going in.
Because the city helps. Going back to the mayor, your question with the porta potty situation, it's, like I said, it's already been addressed. It probably shouldn't be here. We're already in the works of, of-
You're, I'm sorry. It's already been addressed? So they've been removed?
So yes, it should be removed tomorrow. Again, we can't, we can't control what the porta potty companies, whatever route they have. All we can tell them is, hey, pick it up immediately. I can't push them to come tomorrow. That's their route, you know? But, but we do pay them and it has been addressed. We're in the talks with Soul Freak to see if we can use a restroom in the middle of next month. They're already working on it. Problem is, we can't, sometimes the routes for the porta potties don't work. Like, perfect example, just recently, we, as soon as we talked to Gail, we emailed them, say, hey, come pick them up immediately. They said, we'll be there on Thursday. I told them, come back immediately, please, because it's been months since we've started. And again, it was never addressed. When we first talked to the past council members, when we talked to Gail, when we talked to Sean, we had a meeting with them. The ordinance with the porta potties was never brought up. So we, we were never in agreeance that the porta potties need to be, as long as it was serviced. This is new to us. So the, the reason why you see the petition is because we, we thought, this is the first time we hear this. We thought we'd ask the people that attend the market. And within one market, we got to gather maybe 200 signatures. Not one of them there said the porta potties bother them.
There's nobody here that says we want to do it. We want the farmer's market. We just want you to abide by the contract that you have with the city.
Yes, sir, and I agree. And we're trying to do that now. Like I said, this probably shouldn't be up there. It's already been addressed.
So I reviewed, I reviewed the contract. Oh, I think I'm a little close. I reviewed the contract and, you know, I review contracts. That's part of what I do for a living. So it is unclear. I think there was a communication issue by reading the contract. So we know our city ordinance. They work with other cities. They work with Pasadena. Not all cities have the same restroom ordinance as us. If you drive up the road to Clear Lake City, there's a porta potty right there at the park. If you go to Bayside, Harris County, there's a porta potty. So it does say that porta potties must be available or that temporary restrooms, but it does not specify that they must be taken up after every market. So I'm not saying anybody's right or wrong, but I'm saying there is definitely a lapse in communication and that should have been more clear on the contract. And because we know something doesn't mean that everybody else does.
I agree. It needs to be.
I, I don't think they should get beat up over this, not that they are, but I think that this was just a miscommunication now that we've discussed it. And I understand they're making arrangements with Soul Freak. I, I think it's an on-issue, in my opinion.
Okay, so just to confirm, going forward, after the market closes, there will, your service company will then be notified, come pick them up and go? Because my biggest concern is that this is also a residential neighborhood. And I'm not sure how many of us would like to have a port-a-can sitting next door. And true, everybody here voted 100% in your favor and we'd like to see it thrive. So, you know, I think it's a plus. And like you said, I think the issue is now solved. But going forward for the next renewal, perhaps we need to adjust the language just a bit in the manner of understanding so that we do identify, hey, this will be gone and we won't have to go through this.
Thank you for that. I mean, if, just like to add something else, if you're truly in support of the market, I'd like to see councils help for the, solving meanwhile, the porta potty situation. Like I said, it should get resolved within next month. Hopefully, they finish their construction fast enough for us to be able to use them. So I'd like to seek some help or guidance, maybe what we can do with. It's just a perfect example is porta potty situation for this week. We had a market last week. We asked them, please pick them up immediately. They're going to come pick them up on Tuesday and deliver a new porta potty on Thursday. So it's, we're, we're trying to make it as efficient for the vendors to participate in our markets. Like, like you said, there's other cities that make it way cheaper for vendors because the city helps have these markets go on. And I'm sure you're in support of it. I would just like some guidance, maybe help with that. And if you're in support of it, I would love to see all of you there Saturday. It'd be great to have you out there.
I think what we need to do is probably just revisit the contract and tighten up some of the language so that it's more, for instance, just, I'm not picking on this, but it very clearly says here, but no more than once in a two-week period. So you had the event this Saturday and you're having it next Saturday. That's another violation of the contract. So, you know, I, I don't have a problem with that. I, you know, we, I was there Saturday for just a minute. There was a lot of people there. It was good, it was good synergy along Main Street. I'm okay with that. We just need to, I mean, there's five of these months in a year, so we just need to address this in the contract so that-
Will you clarify one more time what we, what we just did? What you just said, will you say it one more time?
I'm sorry.
About the fifth weekend?
Oh, yeah. You know, this month was probably the first time since you've had the event was the, was the fifth Saturday, right?
Yes.
Kind of fell that way. But your contract says that you can't have the market any more than once in a two-week period. So that means if you, that means you couldn't have it this coming Saturday without some special exception. I'm just saying that, that should be considered in the new version of the contract because there's five of those months in the year. We want to, you know, we want to address that.
Sure. Good.
So you're not saying to disallow, you're just saying to clarify the language?
Absolutely.
Yes.
It's going to happen again, you know, five more times. Let's just-
Yeah, no, I mean, I don't, like I said, like, I don't think anyone's saying to stop, stop the market. You know, I think that was just kind of, you know, social media kind of like ran with that, you know? Like, I know, me personally, you know, like I, I, I think it's great, you know? Like I go, I go up there, you know, my family goes up there and, you know, we have a good time, you know? And so I don't think anyone is trying to, to cancel farmer's market, right? Because like I said, I know that, that kind of, that narrative kind of got, got thrown out there. And I mean, you can't control what other people say, right?
Right.
You know, I just say, you know, just make sure that, you know, like my biggest thing, I just want to like try to get as much local businesses there to be able to participate. And I understand competition, right? Like you don't want, you know, 14 people selling Sensi, you know? I totally, I totally understand that angle of it. Just if there's a way that we could maybe like, you know, work, work a little bit better all around, getting some of the local businesses to be out there to, to participate. I think, you know, and even, you know, like, like I said, you know, Gail's Feed Store has been around forever, you know? I get all, you know, all of our, most of our produce is our dog food we get, we get from him, you know? I've done that for years. And they were a little bit, you know, when they were a little bit, you know, you know, upset when they wanted to participate and they were told, oh, hey, sorry, we already have two produce people out here selling, selling that stuff. And just kind of like a way to maybe, you know, if, if we can kind of get like a, like a special, special circumstances for like local businesses to kind of go out there, you know, and, and, and participate. Because I think just name recognition alone, Gail's Feed Store participating would probably also help to, you know, get, gather a little bit, you know, more, more foot traffic and more business just because of how long they've been, been in Seabrook.
Well, I just wanted to clarify, whenever we told Gail's Feed Store, no, whenever they emailed us, I think I remember saying that they couldn't bring all of their things, but we would love to have their produce. But I think they wanted to bring everything, but that was, we just had all those things. But, I mean, they're definitely welcome with their produce, always. We'll take produce from anywhere, whatever, you know?
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to, like, I know you guys also offered a free, a free booth to Carruthers. And when Jesse Jones presented and I asked him why they know, we're no longer doing it, one of the comments he made was, well, the guy next to me was also selling plants and he was very upset about me being there. So I, I can understand the need while the capacity is still growing. I mean, you guys have to be able to pay for the event. So if vendors aren't making money, then vendors will not be returning to the event.
So I'm, I'm confused on a few things when you're done, so.
Well, go ahead.
Are you done? Okay. So here's, here's the thing, all right? We are working really hard to build energy down in Old Seabrook. The first weekend, I've asked several different business owners, how's it working out for you? See an increased foot traffic? I'm not going to name names, okay? But I'm going to say that my understanding is there is not participation for you guys to use bathrooms. I also have the understanding that the first meeting was, the first event was outstanding and it was everything we wanted it to be. Area businesses got foot traffic. Second one wasn't so much. The third and fourth haven't been pretty much at all. The concept that I envisioned when previous council approved this was to generate energy such that it creates sales for the area businesses as well as, and I know that we heard from All Spots today, which I appreciate your feedback on that, was to create sales such that it created economic development in the city to where we had sales tax generated from those sales. My concern is that we have discounted, we as the city have discounted the rate for you to take that property and rent it, knowing that our intention was for you to remove those outhouses, okay? Or porta potties, however you want to call them, sorry. Port-a-lays, if we want to be fancy. And it wasn't done. So it wasn't that, I don't feel like it was that you didn't know it. And I'm not here to attack you. I'm not, I'm just saying, here's the bottom line of it. The bottom line is number one on your agreements, that licensee shall provide all cleanup and waste removal resulting from the event. Now, I don't see a timeline on there. That's, that's a problem. So, but I don't think it was very confusing, the fact that it hasn't been done to me and the fact that it had to be brought up to you for inspection, in my opinion, is a character flaw. I love your program. I think it's got sustainability in Seabrook. But in the end, if we're going to work together, we have to do just that, is work together. And the expectation, it could be looked at as a quality of life program where we are bringing farmers to the area. But to me, it needs to generate sales for the city. And if it's not doing that, and I don't have business owners saying that it is, then that's a challenge to me.
I, I appreciate your, your feedback. I'd like to say that everything you said is pretty much arguable. We've seen crazy fruit, foot traffic. Let's not say the people that come from multiple sides of town, just to come, we have raw milk here. I couldn't tell you how many people come just for raw milk, bacon, all the good stuff that people actually want at the farmer's market. Everything you said is debatable. With that being said, everything you touched on, I'd like to see how we can come about figuring out who, who it is that's complaining. Because there's no formal complaints. I'd like to point that out. Zero formal complaints. So maybe let's find out if they're authentic. Is it the same person, right? Like I said, it's been addressed, going back to what you said with the porta potties. We went over it multiple times. I think it's been addressed. There was miscommunication. I just wanted to reiterate that. It was, it's not that we did it on purpose. It's just that it's not on our contract. So we thought it was okay. I mean, we went months without a word. It seemed like something or someone complained and now it's here. But again, it's something that could have been addressed out of here. Probably shouldn't be here.
Okay, that's about the sixth time you said that. You're here for a reason, so.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I, I agree. And I'm trying to, for comments.
Okay, is there any other comments?
I think this is a beautiful thing. I hope that we can, I, I mean, Seabrook needs more beautiful things, that people are craving more beautiful things. I thank y'all for taking a chance with our city, given, you know, our reputation that we've had. And I hope that we can turn this relationship around and maintain some energy because it's all about bringing the city together and really rejuvenating Main Street. So thank you, guys.
I have another thing. When you're talking about allowing other produce companies come in and, and, and work with you guys, I think that's fantastic because to me, that's what a farmer's market should be. Does that also apply to area resident, area, excuse me, businesses that maybe sell sourdough like you guys have a sourdough vendor? Is it possible that people that work in Seabrook that actually do earn and pay sales tax to the city and do sometimes have to pay ad valorem tax to us? Is there a way for them to participate with you guys? And are you offering everyone to have a free space for, that's in Seabrook or just Carruthers and Gail's Feed Store?
It was just Carruthers and Gail's Feed Store.
That's it.
Our other produce person that grows his own produce, he gets a free spot also.
Gotcha, okay. I think that's great. I was just curious how that worked out and-
You know, I think that y'all have only been here since May and it's just like anything else starting off, except my projects, which are perfect all the way through and I've never had to go back. But I would like to make a formal motion that we instruct city to get with y'all, rework the agreement, clarify any of the ambiguities, and then you can bring it back and council will approve it because you're coming up for renewal and go on from there.
Second.
So councilman Hammond makes a motion to move the discussion back to, to staff, between staff and vendor, to come up with a, an amended agreement and then come back to council. staff and vendor, to come up with an amended agreement and then come back to council and council member to let seconds that. All in favor? opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What does that mean for the markets until then?
You're just keep, you're still under contract, you keep going. This is for the new contract.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
You're welcome. Let's see where I'm at here, sorry. Okay, we have item seven, executive session. Item 7.1, conduct a closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. 551.071, consultation with attorney on matters in which the city attorney has due to devise city council in closed executive session. We will go into executive session at 8:02. Thank you.
Thank you. A little chilly in here.
Did you try your sourcets?
Uh, do we need, um...
Yeah, we do. City Secretary is MIA.
Oh.
And she's gotta take the minutes. They gotta hear him claim the thing and say, "Meeting adjourned." Did you just put that in the call?
You just remember, nobody wants to just leave things alone.
Are they all big breasts behind me? Okay, it's Rachel.
Meeting. Roll it.
Okay.
Clock's back down.
Chief would like to file a motion for adjournment.
You gotta be missing a little bit.
Can we clap for you?
Mayor, there... We're taping, so if you want, we can adjourn.
All right, we are back from executive session at 8:50. No action taken. Item eight, open session. Counsel or convening open session to allow for possible action on any of the agenda items listed above under closed executive session. No action was taken. Item number nine, routine business. Establish future meeting dates and agenda items. Do you know what that is offhand, Gal? Let's see. The sixteenth will be our next council meeting, and the twenty-fifth is our...
Sixteenth. Special.
Special. Okay. There being no further business before this council, meeting is adjourned at 8:51. Thank you.[1732.19][1734.19](Laughter)
Thank you.
Holy cow, that one was a little brutal. Not that I'd...